Meeting in about forty seconds. I lost two board members. Are we live? Oh, great. Good evening again. So today is Tuesday, August 2nd, and this is our first board meeting of a new school year. How exciting is that? So, members present in the boardroom, we have members Wilson, Lessons, Holloman, Higgins, Donley, and Bellamy. Virtually, we have member Jacobs. We also have Dr. Bryant, our new superintendent. This is his first meeting as well. And we also, we have a new administrative assistant in training tonight. Katie will be moving, well, just going next door, still with the district but having a new experience. And our new assistant is Amanda Foster. So welcome Amanda to your first board meeting of the year. I'd like to read our land acknowledge net at this time. First, we'll do the flag salute, so please stand and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'm missing our student Ellie. Ellie usually does this for us, but she's still on vacation. On behalf of the Anchorage School Board, I want to take a moment to recognize and offer gratitude for the sacred ancestral lands of the Denine people. We acknowledge and appreciate that our offices, facilities, and schools are on these sacred indigenous lands, and we honor the traditional care that has been given to this land throughout the generations. We are grateful for the opportunity to grow, learn, work, and create educational communities on this sacred land. We extend continued respect for the many cultures, creativity, and resilience of its indigenous peoples. So that moves us to item A3. First of all, I do want to thank my, the opening comments that I would like to just share again to welcome you and to thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and of this board. We thank our students, our parents, teachers, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district, investing your time, your talents, and your tax dollars. So, welcome. And that brings us to a very special part of our agenda that is really not, that's really not on your, that's not on your agenda, because the board has to make a very significant recognition for about five minutes. So, we're going to do a recognition for about five minutes, and then we're going to take a quick break, and then we're going to come back and resume our business. So at this time, the board should, I'm going to ask the board to join me up front. So as I stated earlier, tonight is kind of bittersweet, and I hope this person is surprised. But if Katie Countryman-Grant, if her family is in the house, would you please come forward as well? Yes, come. So Katie, where are you?
You are very slow.
Oh, I know. Get over here. So Katie, come on up, guys. Come on, I want you to join us. So Katie has served the board for over eleven years. I have known Katie for over twenty years. She is a delight to work with. And so to honor her, thank you. Oh, oh. So, and it was, we did keep it a secret. So thank you, everybody, for keeping it a secret. Oh, yeah, see, we know how to do it. So we created a very special award for Katie that we're going to give to her today. And while we do it, you can also check out the photos that Kathy put together for us. And I'm going to start, first of all, I took the wrong document, give me yours. So the Award of Excellence for the school board is given to individuals that demonstrate significant and outstanding service to the school board or the district. Katie Countryman-Grant was born and raised in Anchorage. She is the daughter of legacy educator and local artist Alice Countryman. Katie is a Rogers Park Elementary alumni. The family tradition continued when her daughters also attended Rogers Park Elementary. Katie is an accomplished artist in her own right. Katie is the owner designer of Wild Alaska and state director of Becca's Closet, a nonprofit program that provides dresses and scholarships to high school students. Member Jacobs, are you able to read your part?
Katie's excellence of service in public education began long before she accepted the position of Executive Assistant to the Anchorage School Board in 2011. This public service includes various positions throughout the district, directly supporting students and teachers in the classroom, as well as hours of volunteering as a parent and business partner.
During her eleven-year tenure as Executive Assistant, Katie has consistently supported the Anchorage School Board with project management, budgets and calendar management, public meeting transcription management, correspondence, lots of management here, correspondence management, logistics management, and simultaneously providing other administrative support for each of the seven-member governing board. She's a master multitasker.
The Executive Assistant position is responsible for a broad and complex set of challenging duties, including facilitating meaningful engagement opportunities for the public, coordinating dozens of board meetings annually, and responding to hundreds of inquiries from individual board members.
Katie has demonstrated unmatched professionalism, dependability, and grace in service to the school board and her community, acting as the board's quasi-parliamentarian and historian, making herself available well outside of normal business hours on a consistent basis.
Katie's unflappable, kind nature, and expansive knowledge of ASD processes and operations was a valuable asset, a valuable resource and asset during the school board's search for a successor. This was evidenced by Katie's willingness to make herself available throughout the process and to facilitate a smooth transition.
It is with appreciation, gratitude, and many, many things that the Anchorage School Board presents the Award of Excellence to Katie Countryman-Grant in recognition of her years of dedicated service to the board. The board could not have achieved this crucial work without Katie's guidance, support, resilience, and flexibility. We wish her the best as she begins the next chapter of public education service in the Anchorage School District.
All together. Thank you, Katie. And so because we had a late start, let's just take a very quick ten-minute break, come back and have some refreshments. Yeah, scooch in because we got to get pictures. So please have some refreshments, and we'll come back in ten minutes. Please, everyone, including staff, please have some refreshments.
That's because you are out marked.
And let's repeat, take this one round with this. How are you? Nice to meet you.
No, I like had no idea at all. I thought it was just for marking.
I know.
Are you going to put up a photo?
You must.
I don't know.
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 We are now at the approval, A3, the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the agenda. Member Donnelly.
I move to table the February 22nd, 2022 Regular Session Minutes to the August 16th, 2022 meeting for consideration.
Second.
Okay. Moved in second to pull the... I'm sorry, tell me again. Was it February?
February 22nd.
Okay. Member Holloman, second. So it's been moved in second to table the February 22nd, 2002 Regular Session Minutes to table those until the next meeting, which is August 16th. Is there any discussion regarding the motion? Regarding that motion? All in favor of the motion, the amendment to the motion? Can you please... Do we have to vote? I can just get a...
Are there any oppositions?
Just point of order. I don't see those minutes on the consent agenda.
They're not on the consent.
Oh, wait.
Yeah. But it is on your printed agenda. Okay. All right. All right. Is there any opposition to the motion? All right, seeing none to that... And that's actually was an amendment to the motion, right? So now we are approving the actual agenda with that one change. Is there any opposition to approving the agenda with that one change? Not seeing any? The agenda is approved as amended. Thank you. So that brings us to our Item B, Community Reports. And Colonel Dunn, you and Lieutenant Colonel, is it? Help me. Snipkey? Snipkey? All right, you guys, welcome. Thank you. And thank you for your patience and welcome.
All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. I'm Colonel Eric Dunn. I'm the Mission Support Group Commander, just took command back in June over at Joint Base El Salvador-Fritzenson. And as Ms. Bellamy noted, Lieutenant Colonel Chris Snipkey is my deputy. And Ms. Adele Daniels sitting right there. She is our School Liaison Program Coordinator. And so we're here to be your liaisons with the base. Especially Adele, she can help take care of any issues that you may have. She is awesome, as well as Holly, her teammate and partner in crime. So make sure we know anything that you need and anything we can do for you. And it doesn't have to be related to schools. If you want to know more about the base, know more about the mission, come take a visit to the base, let us know, and we're happy to help you with that. Also want to thank you for just your leadership and transparency. I know we had a lot of churn with the closing of Ursa Major, but that was laid completely flat with the base. It was great communication. And it's really amazing how well that's come together to make sure our military kids are getting to stay on base and just going to different schools. So thank you so much for all the leadership and support on that. And I hope you all got to see our Arctic Thunder Open House. It was an awesome airshow. I know it was probably a lot of traffic to get in, especially if you were coming late in the day, but it was absolutely amazing show. Great show by the Thunderbirds and just great to see the community on the base and getting to see a lot of the families. Folks who normally don't get to come on the Air Force or the Joint Base got to come and pay us a visit. So thank you so much for that. And that's all I have for tonight. Are there any questions for us?
What's the size of our military student population this year?
You know that one, Adele?
I guess on base in particular.
Any other questions? Yes, Member Wilson.
Just to comment, I would like to take you up on your offer for a tour of the base. I'm sure other board members would like to join me. So if we can request that through Adele, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
We actually have a request already in for... No, not for you alone. But we heard from the new Public Information Officer. Is that... There's a new public?
Public Affairs Officer.
Affairs Office, yes.
Clay Lancaster? That's his name.
Yeah, but I think someone called on his behalf to set up. So I think our community engagement folk are already working on that. So we will be doing something like that. All right. Okay, any other questions for Colonel Dunn? Seeing none, Colonel, you are amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
We appreciate the partnership.
All right.
All right. Our student representative is still vacationing, so she's not here with us tonight. So moving on to Item C on our agenda. We do not have a monitoring for... Our next monitoring, GO monitoring, will be in September. So we do not have that tonight either. And the monitoring calendar and all of our GO monitoring information, you can find it online. Moving on now to our Public Comments section. The Board provides two opportunities. One at the beginning of our meeting and the other at the end of our meeting in the event that we don't get through all the public comments in the beginning. So students do take a priority. We don't have any signed up tonight. But we do have... We do give our students an opportunity to testify, no matter where they are in the queue, so that they can get themselves home and in bed and ready for school the next day. So again, we have set aside a one-hour slot at the beginning of the meeting for public comment. Anything in excess of the one hour will be heard at the second opportunity, which is at the end of our meeting. During public comment, board members will not answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is the public's time to speak and the Board's time to listen. The School Board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings throughout, through their comments. However, to be productive, our meetings must be structured and civil. As you entered the boardroom, you would have... We made available a blue and white form that kind of goes over what I'm going over right now. So if you want to pick that up, you may. But the rules are very simple. We conduct our meetings under Robert's Rules of Order. These rules require that the Board and public be civil and respectful of each other's opinions and statements. We ask that... We ask that we do not attack Board members, employees, or the speaker's motives. No profanity or foul language. We ask that we refrain from disturbing the meeting. And that basically means, well, we just broke this rule because we cheered for Katie. But no cheering, applause, outbursts, or waving of signs or posters. If you have handouts that you'd like to share with the Board, please give them to Katie for her last meeting tonight. So as the President of the Board, it is my duty to enforce the rules of civility and decorum. As such and consistent with Robert's Rules of Order, I have the authority to rule on any speaker for violating these rules or who fail to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Additional details can be found on the handout that I referenced earlier. So with that, we are going to open our public comment. Looks like the first one is telephonic. First couple, Mr. Danielle Kemp. Okay, Mr. Kemp, it's not online. I'll check that. What about Bonnie DeArman?
Yep, I'm here.
Hi, Bonnie, welcome. You have... Please state your name and then you have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Bonnie DeArman. I'm an alumna of Inlet View, and my sons are current students at Inlet View Elementary. I'm speaking to you tonight to advocate for the school. The school's dealing with a lot of issues. It's a... We have backing up toilets. We have sewage on the playground. There was a time when our kids could not drink the water in the school. The roof is leaking and there's a lack of security that is pretty terrifying. Repairing the school, one problem at a time, is irresponsible use of money. Parents and teachers and neighbors have worked so hard on designing a new school. And in our last school, bond vote, our neighborhood overwhelmingly supported in favor of the school. We want a new school. So I'm just talking to you tonight in support of a new Inlet View, supporting the health and safety of our students and advocating using of these appropriated funds from the legislature committee to replace the unsafe school. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Next in person, we have Petra Wilm. Sure. You have three minutes, but we'd love to see them. Hello, guys.
Hello, my name is Petra Wilm, and I'm a parent of these two tiny Inlet View elementary kids. My son is an alum, and he was this tall when he started kindergarten at Inlet View. My daughter is starting her final year as a sixth grader. She couldn't wait to start kindergarten, and she pulled me to school the whole way on her first day. I joined the PTA when my daughter started at Inlet View, and I've had several officer positions, including president during the COVID crisis. I was asked by the former principal... We have a new principal this year, but I was asked by the former principal to participate in the building design, on the Building Design Committee when we started the process and got the funding to design the new school and to provide feedback to the architect, the landscape architect, and ASD as they work through the new school design. The design process has been going on for more than two years, and the drawings are ready for permitting. This project is poised to move forward quickly once construction funds are available. You've probably heard through emails and from Bonnie's testimony last and probably later this evening about many of the things that are wrong with Inlet View, but I thought I'd shake things up a little and tell you about a few critical things that are so, so right about Inlet View. Inlet View is located in a bustling neighborhood with a lot of turnover of younger families over the last decade. There are many young kids who are poised to attend, not even in kindergarten age yet, but their parents are ready and waiting. They'll be able to walk and bike safely to the front door, as many generations have, and even more safely at the new replacement school. The student body at Inlet View is diverse and not just culturally. Inlet View kids come from a widely different economic backgrounds. This mix at a school is becoming more rare and important as America becomes more divided by income levels and schools become increasingly specialized and specific. Many of the staff and teachers at Inlet View have had long tenures there. They provide the backbone that fostered the International Backglow Laureate Program, which was finally certified last year after three years of applying and spending a lot of money sending teachers to be trained and being reviewed. So that was a very exciting milestone for us. This is the only international backglow laureate program for primary schools in the state of Alaska. The Parent Teacher Association is alive and kicking. Since COVID, parents and staff have worked together to revive two successful fundraisers that were asleep during COVID. Our spring salmon run this year had one of its most successful years ever. This is a critical moment for Inlet View. Please keep this little workhorse of a public school at the front of your thoughts as you decide the wisest way to spend the state funds. You cannot go wrong with an investment in Inlet View. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra. Next, we have Barbara Bundy. Welcome, Barbara. You have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. Like Bonnie DeArman, I am also an Inlet View alumnus. I graduated, I'm aging myself, in 1986 from sixth grade. And my two children, my son just graduated from sixth grade, and my older son and my younger son is going into fifth. And I just want to add words of support for investing in Inlet View. I mean, it's kind of like when your car gets super old and it's just costing more to fix it. Nobody likes to lay out the money, but at some point, you know it's going to cost you more in the long run if you don't. And we're at the point now, I mean, when I was there in the early 80s, it was too small, and there weren't enough separate rooms. You know, you need a separate gym and a separate cafeteria, or else there's just... You just can't do all the things that an elementary school should do. And you know, now we've got the portables. It's just in bad shape. It's not safe. And I think we're facing a choice between, do we invest money now and have something that is safe and promotes all the activities and the learning that we want to have? Or do we spend money, the same amount or more, according to the studies, over years and end up with something even worse that we then have to replace anyway? I mean, as the former owner of a 2003 minivan, I can tell you that that's... At some point, you have to bite the bullet. And so I strongly support as just a good fiscal decision that we replace Inlet View. The kids deserve it. They work really hard there. The teachers work hard. The principals work hard. It's a great school. It's got a great diversity of community, and I think we should invest in it. And then I do want to take 30 seconds to say that I'm a little nervous with public speaking and the signup process, it's not something I would normally do to testify in public, but you always get an email back from Katie, and she's always really helpful. And it just makes you feel a little bit like, okay, I think I can do this. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Deborah Hanson. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, President Bellamy Board, and a special welcome to Dr. Bryant. We hope you enjoy our community in Alaska, and we hope you have a great life here. So anyway, my name's Deborah Hanson, and I have lived for the last 40 years, actually over 40 years now, next to Inlet View School. And I oppose the secrecy in which ASD has chosen to move Inlet View School to the south end of the schoolyard. And I'm asking you to stop the project in order to restore trust in the public process. I handed out a list of the envisioned contracts since 2014 and all the amendments that have been made to it. The contract values increased from $55,000 to over $3 million, all based on an eight-year-old RFP. When I was reading the amendments, what it demonstrated to me is the Anchorage School District decided before July 7th, 2020, to move the school to the south side, because it stated in there in the proposal. So that was around the time the bond passed for 2020. This was before there was any public comment or any intervention, or you all went through the whole public process and had already decided to move the school to the south end of the school ground. Had I known that's what ASD would have done, I wouldn't have voted for the bond, and I certainly would have made a fuss back in 2020 rather than a whole in September of 2021 when we found out about it. Anyway, this was a major move. ASD did have meetings with schoolteachers, with parents, not with the immediate neighbors, and they violated the State of Alaska Open Meetings Act, which has been remedied, sort of. But anyway, despite all this neighborhood opposition when we found out about it, the school bond failing and the failure at the Urban Design Commission, the Anchorage School District continues to push this design through. The latest is the rumor, which the previous people have spoken to, is about capturing some state money to fund the school. Now, how do you think voters will view the Anchorage School District when you're magically finding money to pay for Inlet View after they turned it down? Do you think this is going to help pass the next school bond? We can't keep magically funding ASD. We need to pass some bonds. That was a hundred... Well, what was it, $110 million or something that was turned down? We need the money to keep roofs from leaking. The Ursa Major's closed down. They're moving kids to other schools. Anyway, I'm asking you to pull Inlet View from the Urban Design Commission review, go back to the drawing board, propose an excellent building that the community supports. We all own these schools, and we need to keep them going. I ask you to restore the public trust and stop this project. Anyway, thanks for listening to me. And I know it's a complex task for you to manage the largest organization here in Anchorage. And finally, I want to say Katie got back to me sometimes on Sunday nights. She was fantastic, and I hope you have a great life ahead of you because you've done wonderful work here.
Thank you, Deborah. Next, Michael Teo. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Michael Teo. I'm a parent of a five-year-old incoming kindergarten student at Inlet View. My family and I have lived in the area where Inlet View is the neighborhood school for over 10 years. As you've already aware and you've heard towards tonight, you probably know Inlet View is one of the oldest schools in the district. It's suffered from chronic maintenance issues for years. The school district has already invested into the planning for a rebuild replacement of Inlet View. And I'm here to ask that you consider, as you consider how to allocate state capital improvement funds, to prioritize the rebuilding of Inlet View as a high priority. I understand there will always be competing demands for limited capital improvement funds. I've been aware that Inlet View has needed rebuild for quite a long time. In the passing years, other neighborhood schools have received capital improvement funds, and the pieces are now in place for replacement of Inlet View. I think the timing is right. I'm pragmatic. I realize that some are opposed to rebuilding the school. So I'd advocate prioritizing the learning environment the students, both in the near term and the distant future, would experience in a new building. I also worry as I read about devastating acts of violence perpetrated on students in other parts of the country, that security at Inlet View falls very short. I know that a rebuild of Inlet View, a replacement, would be a more secure place for students to learn than the outdated and secure building that stands there today. As the parent of a five-year-old, I have friends and acquaintances with similarly aged children in the neighborhood. We talk. We ball. We look forward with enthusiasm for sending our kids to the neighborhood school, and we hope that it will be rebuilt and renewed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Elise Huggins. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Elise Huggins, and thank you all for being here and doing the service that you do. I really do appreciate it. I have a couple of acknowledgements I'd like to make. One is acknowledging that we as a community need to acknowledge that this is one of the district's oldest schools. This school was designed by Ed Crittenden. He was known as the father of architecture in Alaska. I'm not here to say keep the school. I'm just here to say we need to acknowledge that the school has a place in Anchorage's history. It is the only remaining example of a building of this type in Anchorage. And I say this with heartbreak as the Fourth Avenue Theater is being demolished as I speak. I have worked for the school district. The school district, I own the firm of Earthscape. I have worked for the school district for the past 30 years. The school district has made my livelihood. I truly am thankful for that. I have worked as a site planner and a landscape architect. I come on this project because I think there are things that happened in the process here. I also acknowledge the people who work so hard, the community members, who spent two years working on a process to make their school better, to have a new school and to have it fit into the community. However, it was a flawed process. It didn't involve the full community. It didn't get full community input. So as someone who's worked on over 70 Anchorage School District site plans, and that's doing master plans and site plans, I worked at Denali Elementary School, where there was objection to the relocation of that school. We stopped the process. The architecture firm that worked for it held workshops. It worked with the community, and it led to the current plan of the school, which is an incredible school. It's an incredible elementary school. The process was delayed for a little bit, but we have a building that's going to be there for 50 years at Denali Elementary School. That's not going to happen with the current Inlet View Elementary School design. I worked on Mears Middle School. We were in the process of redesigning the parking lot, which is a lot of what I do, is making school grounds safer for everyone, especially the children. The process was stopped three quarters of the way through because we had a community member who was not happy with design. We said we came up with the best possible design that we could come up with. He argued. He argued. We had work sessions. We invited more of the community members. Lo and behold, he had a better idea than we did. We went back to the drawing board. We took his idea, and we came back to the neighborhood. We came back to the school district and said, this is a better design. We agree with it. We worked on Mears, so Mears, Gerdwood, South Anchorage High School was opposed by the community. We worked with neighbors. I knocked on neighborhood neighbors' doors to see what their opinion was, to see what kind of landscaping they liked, to see what the fences they want, to minimize objections to the school. So this is the process that we have flawed with Inlet View Elementary School. With COVID and with some of the things that have happened, the psychological term...
I'm sorry, your time is up. And thank you for coming. There's one right here? Oh, okay. Thank you, Elise. Next, we have Martin Hanson. Welcome, Martin. You have three minutes.
Dr. Bryant. Welcome to Anchorage. If you decide you would like to learn cross-country skiing. I've been coaching 25 years. Be happy to help. School Board members, it's good to see all of you again. Katie, I'm sorry I'm not going to see you again, but you've been wonderful and very helpful. Thank you. Well, I'm Martin Hanson. I coach cross-country skiing for elementary school kids. I've done it, I think, for 25 years. For the last two years, I've been a kindergarten teacher's aide at Olaa School. I've coached boys and girls club soccer at Inlet View School. I care about kids, and I've lived next door to Inlet View School for 36 years. 2020, I voted for the school bond, replace Inlet View School on its existing site at the north end of the property. And like every speaker here, I want Inlet School to be a better school. That's why I'm here. Last fall, September 21, ASD revealed that in violation of the Open Meetings Act and in violation of ASD's guidelines for elementary school design, the new school would be built on the south end of the property in the highest earthquake risk zone in Anchorage. Now, my house is on that zone too, and I'm willing to take that risk, but I'm not willing to put that risk for the kids and staff. The reason for this move was so that the students could stay in their old school while the new school was built. I don't think that will work, and this is my exhibit. What you have is the existing school and the proposed school. And there's about a 20-foot gap between the two. I don't see how you're going to teach kids when you go on construction that close. Well, you've got the dust, you've got the noise. You've got the risks associated with heavy equipment, and you aren't going to have any playing grounds, playground for them. For every other school in Anchorage, when it's needed to be repaired, when it's needed to be replaced, Anchorage School District, like Ursa Major's experience, has found a way to make it work and to make it work well. I'm asking you, Dr. Bryant, and you, friends on the school board, please make it work for Inlet View School. We can have a better school for our students, for the public, and for the future. And I know that you can do it, and I hope you do it. And I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. And next, we have Pamela Teshi. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Pamela Teshi, and I've been a resident of South Edition, although I'm for, well, since 1975. I had a child who went to Inlet View, and she's 32 now. And back then, it was a rough school needing replacing. So I'm all for, I've always supported school bonds. I support students and the legislation that is needed to support education. And but what I don't support is the site plan for this particular school. And also, I didn't know anything about the building being moved to the south end. And that just seems odd to me in terms of shadowing, even though the architect has come up with all these... all these official documents to say that's not an issue, except in real life, it is. And the fact that we just heard about it unless we were specifically parents of the school and the children, and that concerns me because I would have had input much earlier before $3 million had been spent. And I hope we can revisit this plan with people who are knowledgeable, such as Ms. Huggins and other people who've been architects in this process, so that we can have better input than we have had previously. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Teshi. Next, Anna Boisen.
Good evening, and thank you, Chair, and welcome to Anchorage. This is my first time coming to the school board here, especially during COVID and such, and to bring my daughter here, but it's that important. I am an immediately adjacent neighbor of the Inlet View Elementary. I'm here to ask you to appropriate funds to rebuild the school. Although voters in a couple outlying parts of the municipality voted against the bond, nearly 70% of the voters from the Inlet View area supported the bond, and that was when it would have been 100% funded by homeowners and other local property taxpayers. Now that the state legislature has stepped up and appropriated funding, I can only see support for these projects being higher. As you know, the Inlet View building is falling apart, failing plumbing, failing heating, sewage leaking onto the playground. In April, the school bond failed by a narrow margin. I was angry and disappointed. Then, less than a month later, on May 24, the absolutely horrific shooting at Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas happened. Now I'm scared for teachers and families. Inlet View lacks a safe entry vestibule, which can reduce this risk of violence against our young children and our families, and everyone who is participating on school grounds for before-after care, for activities such as skiing, and for families and staff that spend many days of their lives there, year after year. Please fund Inlet View now. The need of this project is at least as great, if not greater, than any of the other projects, and taking care of the most expensive of the bond packages will make it much easier to pass a bond with other smaller projects spread across the city. Finally, I recognize that every day, every month of delay is damaging to Inlet View. Parents are thinking about sending their kids elsewhere because they don't know if they're going to have a safe and functional building. Please get this problem fixed and appropriate the money for Inlet View as intended by some of the key legislators who have fought, legislators who have fought and won for this funding. I am upset to hear that my neighbors don't support this for, to me, what seems to be superficial and visible concerns for shadowing or placement of the school, and that safety and comfort and security should be at the top of everyone's minds after the Uvalde shooting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Boisen. Next, telephonically, we have Seth Anderson. Seth, can you hear? Star six to unmute. There you go.
Yeah, this is Seth. Am I there?
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes, sir.
Great, thank you. This is Seth Anderson. I am a parent of students at Inlet View Elementary School, a structural engineer locally. I'm calling in to talk about, of course, Inlet View Elementary School and the possibility to use funding from the state of Alaska to replace the Inlet View School. So far, there's been over $2.5 million spent on design and permitting for an Inlet View School replacement, so it's well underway. I have a concern that if there's no plans for replacement to the school, there's also no plans for maintenance or safety improvements to the school. There's nothing on the current capital improvement budget or in the six-year capital improvement plan for things like improving the poor pedestrian visibility and safety, addressing the HVAC systems that are a distraction to teaching and learning, or the inadequate fire and life safety systems that are needed for a safe school. ASD and their professional consultants have determined in the past that the cost-effective and fiscally responsible pollution to managing Inlet View is to replace the school. Repair and renovation looked at in the long term as not the most economical use of ASD funds. That was determined by ASD and their consultants. Inlet View replacement's been on the ASD capital budget and six-year capital improvement plan for maybe more than 10 years. I'm a past member of the Anchorage Planning and Zoning Commission, and it's been several years since I was on it, but even when I was on it then, it was always on the six-year capital improvement plan to replace Inlet View School. So if there is money available in ASD's capital improvement accounts from the state legislature, I think that it should be used to finally replace Inlet View. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next, we have David Hanson. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Well, thank you very much for having me. It's, I cannot believe July is over, and we are in August. That is wild. I think everyone I know has gotten married. And I don't think I was here for most of July, which is a big shame. Big welcome, I guess, to this school year, and I appreciate, really appreciate seeing all of you. I'm here, as I'm sure you could guess, with my family to talk about the proposed Inlet View School. I'm really a proud graduate of ASD. It propelled me forward to be able to travel to school, getting to school out east, but I missed Alaska and came back and worked as a carpenter before architecture school down in Seattle, finished up architecture school with my masters, and, you know, I keep coming back. I've had opportunities to be elsewhere. I've gotten jobs elsewhere, and I keep saying, you know, I need to be in Anchorage. I grew up right next to Inlet View Elementary School. I grew up playing in that beautiful field, and I grew up supporting the school. And, you know, as a result of the education I got ASD, I think I'm going to end up as a successful architect here in town. I don't intend to leave. I want to be a community member forever until, you know, the great beyond comes. What I'm here to talk to you about is I think during COVID, a lot of rash decisions were made, and a lot of haphazard decisions were made because we were panicked. And I think the decision on ASD's part, and I don't know if this breaks Robert's rules, was a haphazard idea to keep a school open, build a new school, and then swap. To me, it kind of breaks down to one year of utility versus 50 years of life. A school is not only a building, but it's also a place outside defined for kids to learn about nature, about running, about being physical. There's being trapped in school all day as an elementary school kid is like a no-go, I would imagine. I have not had the benefit of being a KDA like my father has. So I guess what I'm asking the school board here to do is to really listen to everyone here and see there's no difference, the big supporters of Inlet View, whether it's replacement or repair and remodel, big feelings here, but it's really just an issue of placement, and it's an issue of how ASD went about talking about a really expensive project. So I'm really urging you to think, it has a lovely bell, to think about the fact that I, as a big supporter of ASD and a big supporter of education, wasn't able to vote for the bond this year, and that really bummed me out in like a serious way. And I would love, in the future, to vote for every single bond I can. So thank you for your time. I hope you all had a great summer. I see some tans, and I'll see you, I guess, in two weeks or so. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Amanda Compton, is she online? Yes, she's there. Amanda, star six to unmute.
Hi, just star six. Can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Amanda Compton. I grew up in the South Edition in the 80s and 90s, and I purchased a residence there in 2009. My childhood was fantastic, because there's wide streets in the South Edition, there's big trees, there's slow-moving vehicles, and wonderful large areas of open spaces. The parkship offers a section of the neighborhood to downtown, and the Inlet View Open Field offers unlimited opportunities. I've spoken up against the proposed south side design many times now. I've been told to stay objective, pragmatic, and stick to the facts. But the reason I like this neighborhood has little to do with the statistics, the groundwater levels, and parking lots effects. It has everything to do with the culture. There were three of us girls on Fulton P Street about the same age. We basically had three moms. The neighborhood was buoyed by a strong sense of support and camaraderie. The culture felt different then, and I attribute that to making civil, intentional decisions for the greater good of the neighborhood. Education isn't isolated to teaching Billy and Suzie in their classrooms. It's a component of community and neighborhood health. You've already heard or will hear specific issues many residents have about the current proposed design on the south side. There's no other school that's shoved against people's houses without a road buffer. But these are poor design elements. It's the design process that's perhaps the most disheartening. Get over it, was what a neighbor told me. Get over a clandestine design process, and I won't. But will you guys? People feel disenfranchised across the nation, and this school design process highlights a contributing reason. Civility is under attack. How we treat one another matters. Why push a design that's wrought with so much dissent, especially when there are alternatives that won't result in student busing? Supporting the current design for the new school will send a very clear signal to community organizers that transparency and public participation are not necessary components for large community projects. They are, however, necessary components for a healthy and civil community. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Compton. Next, we have Lois Epstein. Or is it Epstein? Welcome. Okay, thank you. You have three minutes, and welcome.
Thank you, and good evening. Congratulations, Superintendent Bryant, and welcome to Anchorage. My name is Lois Epstein, and I am a licensed engineer in Alaska, and I live near but not adjacent to Inlet View Elementary School. I'm a former member of Anchorage's Budget Advisory Commission. I use the school grounds frequently. As many of you know, but which Superintendent Bryant might not, the process for addressing Inlet View's needs has been horrendous. ASD and its architects did not include community members in design discussions until it was too late for those involved to make a difference. And of course, that leads us to wonder whether that was intentional. The process also violated the state's Open Meetings Act. As an engineer, and this is not a superficial set of reasons, the south side design selected clearly will result in high, not yet quantified, costs to remedy the groundwater issues on that part of the grounds and what might affect houses nearby. Neighborhood traffic will significantly worsen as vehicles would be directed to a single, often icy hill exit, whereas now there are three exits from the neighborhood. The south side building location has higher seismic risks than the existing school location, and the green space, our community treasures, would be covered with visitor parking spots that are unnecessary in this neighborhood of wide streets, and we're being told it's just because that's what the code says. In short, the design selected is objectively terrible from an engineering and community standpoint. Because ASD has a new superintendent, a new chief operating officer, a new Inlet View Elementary School principal, and the school bond failed in April, now is an excellent time to begin a more inclusive stakeholder process to address Inlet View's needs. As a founder of Friends of Inlet View Elementary School, or Fives, our organization urges the Anchorage School Board to withdraw the pending major site plan review for Inlet View Elementary School replacement that is awaiting a decision at the September 14, 2022 Urban Design Commission meeting. Note that the Urban Design Commission did not approve the current design at its March 9, 2022 meeting, and virtually no design changes have been made since. Therefore, we ask for the withdrawal of the application. The Fives organization is confident that a new school design and location, supported by the entire community, can be developed expeditiously without going back to square one in the design process. Thank you very much for your thoughtful consideration of this request to withdraw the Inlet View Elementary School application to the Urban Design Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Epstein. Next, we have Sharon Meacham. You have three minutes.
Good evening, and welcome, Superintendent Bryant. My name is Sharon Meacham, and I am retired Anchorage School District principal and was a late appointee to the Inlet View Building Design Committee. Last year, you received testimony from myself and several other Inlet View neighbors who voiced their concerns about the accepted building proposal. We continue our support for a new Inlet View School. We do not support the endorsed plan. We repeatedly asked that the building be built in a location where the subsurface was drier and posing less seismic risk, where the better traffic flow could occur, where there was safer pedestrian access, and where there was less playground shading during the winter months. To date, there has been no movement on any of these issues. Tonight, it's the start of a new school year, and I ask again that you reconsider the location of this building plan. I have two key issues. One is health safety, and under that heading, I would say, the proposed issue, as you've heard, is in the highest seismic danger area, and we know this fact by the charts that ASD had shared to the community. The north end is viewed as less risky, and the current Inlet View structure has withstood two major earthquakes and gives great testimony to that vision. This proposal also requires that the children do remain in the school, where, as you've heard, raw sewage makes its way into the sinks, the toilets, and also appears on the playground. The new plan also creates dangers, potential dangers, for pedestrians who are accessing the school to enter the building because they need to cross a busy intersection, they need to go through a parking lot, and then cross through the drop-off and pickup area just to get to the front door. The second concern I have is one of cost. Before the building foundation can be poured, we have to do extensive and expensive site work. And the way I understand it, the water table is only four feet below the current playground, and that will create extensive water drainage issues. Next, the way I understand it also is that we will have to then pull out several feet of underground peat and then replace it with new fill. Now, we've asked if there was any kind of cost analysis between the north side and the south side regarding these issues, but we were told nothing like that existed. We have heard from the ASD employees and experts that the north side is preferred. We're starting a new year with a new administrative focus, and I ask you to open the process to the people around the community and to develop a most cost-effective and safe building for the Inlet View community and the Anchorage School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meacham. Next, we have Roslyn Grady Weish. I don't see her in the boardroom. Let's try Zach Fields. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Chairwoman Bellamy, members of the board, and Superintendent Bryant. My name is Zach Fields, and I'm here to testify in support of using some of the money My name is Zach Fields, and I'm here to testify in support of using some of the money that the legislature appropriated to build Inlet View. I don't have a dog in the fight in terms of the design. I know that kids need a new school building. I wanted to let you know that Anchorage area legislators watched closely when the school bond narrowly failed, despite very strong support within neighborhoods that go into Inlet View. And when legislators saw that bond fail, I think there was an understanding that there were some voters in Anchorage who had reached a tipping point, and after years of no school bond debt reimbursement, no state matching funds, we, as a state, had to step up and match funds, and thankfully, we were able to do that, and that money survived the veto pin. I'm glad the legislature acted swiftly to appropriate the funding, and Inlet View was on the minds of several of us. It was my top priority for capital funding, and Representative Drummond, who currently represents Forest Park, also identified it as the only capital priority. So all of us, and so did Tom Baggage, so all of us who represented that area fought for that money, and with the support of the Capital Budget Co. Chair Kelly Merrick, we got it. I know that over $100 million from the state is not enough to address all your capital needs, all your security needs, and all the needs in terms of a fiscal cliff, but I think if we use some of this money wisely, we'll position ourselves for future bond success. I would argue that appropriating funds for Inlet View, which is the largest obligation we face right now, gives you the flexibility to go to either a one-year or two-year bond in the future, which is important. It's going to enable your next bond package to have the widest possible geographic spread, and I think when we look at the returns from South Anchorage in the last bond, that geographic spread of projects is going to be really important. If the district, and in addition to that, looking at over $100 million coming to the district, that is enough money to rebuild Inlet View, to make other school safe entry vestibule improvements, and to appropriate money for the fiscal cliff. I think we also have to acknowledge that, you know, we, as a state, are going to have to step up and help you with that fiscal cliff, and that's advocacy that I want to work on together. We can't solve that problem tonight, but we can advocate strongly going forward. I want to be part of that. Finally, I just want to acknowledge that there are very pressing safety issues at Inlet View right now, and rebuilding that school should be the district's highest capital priority. There's not a safe entry vestibule. It is very outdated. It makes no sense to add a new safe entry vestibule to a building that's falling apart. Today, there's fencing around the sewage leak outside on the playground. That fencing has been there for months. The bathrooms don't work, the heating and plumbing systems are failing, and the district's own analysis shows that it will be more expensive to renovate than replace the school. Thank you for listening and for the board's previous support for Inlet View.
Thank you, Representative Fields. And that brings us back. That is our last person to testify, to provide comment. Do you have anybody signed up? Okay. So that brings us to our consent agenda, item E.
Madam President, I move to approve or adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any opposition to approving the agenda, the consent agenda, as presented? Seeing none, consent agenda is approved. We have no action items, so we're moving on now to item G, non-action items. Member Lessons.
Yeah, I'd like to pull memorandums one, two, and 11 for discussion.
One, two. And I don't see 11.
Sorry, down at the bottom. Zero, zero. Oh, it's memorandum 1011, and it's item number eight.
Eight, okay. All right. Thank you. Do we need a second? All right, so now if we can, if there are no other items being pulled, can we have, we will, Member Lessons, you pulled item one, two, and eight. Would you like to speak to your number one?
Thank you for this opportunity, Madam President. This was a pretty lengthy memorandum, and I fully believe in energy efficiency, but what I don't understand is why this project is being proposed right now. Maybe I need to reread this more carefully. I didn't see the Mears project anywhere on the six-year CIP that we recently approved. And I don't understand why this project would leapfrog over the other items that the district has grappled with. And if there's a compelling reason, then maybe I didn't get it or understand it, but I just wanted to raise that question of why this project at over $3 million right now.
I've got to, Bryant.
I'm going to ask that Acting Chief Operating Officer, Rob Holland, respond.
Thank you.
Welcome. Didn't know you were going to speak tonight, did you?
Thank you, through the President. Thank you, members. Just a brief overview, and I'd like to act, ask Senior Director of Capital Planning and Construction, Tom Fenicev, to go into more detail. So at Mears Middle School, we have an ongoing situation where, in effect, we've already opened up the exterior of the building. And what we would call a concealed condition is that the siding needs replacement, okay, is the premise here. Not going into details of why the siding needs replacement, know that when they begin to take that off, we've discovered that there's no insulation under there, and there should in fact be insulation under there. In fact, when we go up to the second level and also begin to look under the siding, we find that there's no insulation. That will have to be remedied, and so that's the generality of the concealed condition we're speaking of. I can ask Mr. Fenicev to go into more detail there for you.
So through the President, so we did have Mears project. The roof was being done. That project is completed. But in going through and evaluating, especially after the earthquake, we noticed that there were various portions of the exterior veneer, which was a masonry-type veneer, was falling off in areas. It caused a safety risk. So we dug in deeper to that, and that's when we found out that the insulation underneath that was not up to standards, and so therefore, we kind of were put into a position where we had to move forward with it.
You have a question?
Yes.
So just to paint a picture in my mind, I thought that I read that there was thermal graphic imaging, or, you know, sort of, I'm imagining you're using a device to look through the building, but what I think I heard you say is that it's already opened up. If I were to drive by Mears, would I see walls opened up without insulation right now? I mean, is that?
Small areas.
Okay, so small areas have been opened up.
Yes.
And which is how we discovered the problem, which would be how it was elevated to a level of heightened concern.
Yes, ma'am, and that we explore when thermal imaging gives us a reason to look for hot or cold spots. Absolutely, that's the procedure, yes.
Is that less, is that less terrible than, like, leaky roofs with, in schools with buckets right now?
Well, so, as Mr. Fenicev mentioned, the roof was the first priority, and that piece is done or nearly completed. Is that correct, Tom? And then the second phase of that was to explore why some of this facade, I called it siding, which is an oversimplification, why it was beginning to crack and/or peel off of the building. And that's, that's when further analysis revealed that underneath, we do have some moisture that's gotten in, but we also have a lack of any insulating material that should have in fact been there.
Thank you. So your next item?
You guys might just stay right where you are. This is a good team to have. Yeah, so I was looking at the contract, the contract modifications, and it looks like costs on those items have increased anywhere from 2% to more than 11%. That's clearly an upward trend, and I'm just wondering if there are any areas or types of cost increases that are more worrisome for the administration? I mean, any cost increase is worrisome, but are there particular areas of, I don't know, school construction that, like, you're really raising the red flags that we should be aware of?
Well, I'll start, and then I can always ask for more detail. In general, I would like the board to know that we are tracking these increases very carefully. Note that the increases on the spreadsheet you're referring to are actually on the low end in what we are trending for new projects that we're asking for scope and bid on. And so we are very concerned with material costs. We're tracking material costs alone right now of up to 40% in some materials like glass. All metal costs are up. We're, in fact, it's a curve of linear trend that we're tracking, material cost increases right now. We also have insurance and labor costs. Note that labor costs are generally part of a scope where a contractor will need to put in an added risk factor, because all of these projects are bid at risk from a contractor's perspective. And there is now this whole added dynamic where there are delays, perhaps not enough personnel to finish the jobs, so we're seeing these cost escalations. And it will have a material impact if there's no end in sight soon as to the amount of work that can get done. In some cases, we're going back and revisiting ITBs that were originally let several months or a year ago to make sure our cost estimates are current before any work begins. If you'd like any information, in particular, on any line items there, I could certainly ask for Mr. Fenicev to comment on that.
I was mostly just curious about what, if you were most worried about, but it sounds like you have many worries.
That's one way to put it, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'd just like to share the latest Alaska General Contractors Report. They put out these inflation alerts, and honestly, looking at some of these numbers that we've seen for change orders, I'm really surprised they're as low as they are. Overall, according to the AGC report, which was published in April, the construction industry is seeing an 18% increase in bid price. It's just right off the bat. Steel has gone up 113%. Diesel fuel has gone up 237%, which affects transportation of all these materials. Plywood over 100%, copper 70%, gypsum 29%, aluminum 52%. So not only do we have issues with the cost of the supplies, but also in getting them here in diesel or by ship, which where most of the materials comes from. So I'm actually kind of surprised these are as low as they are, and I think that's due to the relationship we have with our contractors.
Okay, thank you. And for item number eight, Member Lessons.
Yeah, this is, this one had a smaller figure, but I guess this is related to my ongoing question about, is there an update for what our one-to-one initiative for technology is going to be looking like as we move forward? It's my understanding that these Chromebooks are replacing ones that will be expired, but then to what purpose, to what end, and that's probably a question for our tech.
It's our CIO. Mr. Flickenson will answer.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Through the President to Mrs. Lessons. So these devices actually are being, that are being replaced are devices that have actually completely aged out and been removed from the system in July, and so they're really old devices. They're in the seven-year-plus range, and Google no longer supports them. And so these are replacing infrastructure that currently exists. As far as one-to-one, we are going to have that discussion this year with instruction about what are the appropriate levels for one-to-one, and how do we want to continue to maintain it? Right now, we use grades three through 12 being one-to-one, and the three through six really is not completely one-to-one yet at this point either. There's lots of shared devices and carts at those levels, and so if you looked at elementary schools, those are about two-to-one as opposed to one-to-one. So secondary is all one-to-one, and at this point is hoping to continue to be one-to-one. I think elementary, there may be some additional discussion about what that model looks like this year.
Okay, you good? All right, so these items will come back before the board in two weeks, all of them, all of the non-action items. I would think a couple would make it to consent agenda, but we will vote next week. And this brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. Okay, we're trying, working out a technical glitch.
Madam President. Is anybody else warm? It just seems really warm in here. Can somebody please turn down the heat?
Thank you, Member Donley. I'm actually quite comfortable, but I've been where you are, and we can, if that's possible, we will let the staff try to do something. Yeah. Is that fan on? Okay. Thank you, sorry. So maybe we can, can that individual, can we have the next speaker just call in, and we hold the phone? She does have it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We're still having a little technical glitch. What I'd like to do is move forward, and then if they are able to connect, we'll come back to them. Okay? All right, so let's go with the superintendent update. Your first one.
It's my first one, so good evening, everyone. So I hope you'll indulge me in a couple minutes of remarks, and then I'll get to the business. First off, I just want to thank the entire school board and the Anchorage community for the opportunity to serve as your superintendent. This marks my 33rd day in the role, and needless to say, there is a lot to learn about this incredible community, and I look forward to it. I also feel immense gratitude and respect for my predecessor, Dr. Bishop, who truly went above and beyond to make me feel welcome and prepared since I moved here in May. The Anchorage community is one that I want to be a part of for the long haul. Dozens of people have been kind enough to welcome me into their homes and show me all the fun spots to eat at and gather in town, and I'm very grateful to feel that I have real friends and connections here. And since moving here just a few months ago, I've had the opportunity to even spend my birthday in Girdwood with new friends, get up to Flat Top. I saw my first whale, not in Anchorage, to be clear. I saw it in Juneau, and I got a nice pack rafting trip in Portage Creek. And I am not too embarrassed to share with the public that I got stuck in a tree in my first 10 minutes on my pack rafting trip, because what I wanted to share is that I got unstuck, and that's what's important, is getting unstuck from the tree. And, you know, honestly, getting stuck in a tree is a lot like being superintendent. It's like you're trying to avoid the tree, and sometimes the current just comes and knocks in a different direction, and you end up in the tree. But you know what? You have to get out of the tree, because that's how our kids are going to get educated. So I'm going to keep on getting unstuck from trees. And then I also want to share that I've greatly enjoyed the opportunity to get a head start on my listening and learning tour across the district. To date, I've already visited dozens of campuses, observed numerous summer programs in action, and I've had numerous one-on-one and small group conversations with principals, ASD team members, which includes teachers and assistant principals, and leaders of our employee associations. We have a lot of great things already going on and people in place in ASD, and I look forward to supporting and growing that good work. It was also a pleasure to begin meeting with our community leaders to discuss potential collaborations with the district. For example, I enjoyed my time with our new UA Chancellor, Parnell, and our collective big hopes for a stronger partnership than ever before and continuing our incredible collaborations such as our middle college AMCS. I also want to share that I look forward to planning for ASD's future alongside the community. A number of people seem to be interested in what is my vision in future for the district, and the thing about any future vision or direction is that it requires the input of the community. It means that I need to get out there. I need to listen to our employees and community and our staff and the great people of Anchorage, because together, we collectively shape that future. To be clear, Anchorage is a special place, and while we do need to make changes to get to where we need to be, we need to implement those changes in a way that fits the unique needs of this community, Anchorage. So as we gear up for back to school, you can expect to see me out there in the community, in our school buildings, talking with staff, seeing classrooms, and listening to what you have to say about our schools and where you want to see the district go. you have to say about our schools and where you want to see the district go. But I will share that what I intend to be focused on is, one, our board goals and guardrails; two, ensuring that ASD is on a path to long-term financial sustainability, given our conversation earlier today; and three, retaining and attracting talented educators to choose ASD for the long haul. As a leader, I like to keep it simple and laser-focused on the quality of teaching in our classrooms and the quality of leadership in our schools, and everything else needs to align and support that. So with that said, I'd like to share a few high-level updates with the board. One, I'd like to start by giving an update on Ursa Major. I first want to express immense gratitude for the Ursa Major staff and families and the entire Jay Bear community for trusting us to do what's needed to ensure the safety of our students. In addition to what I've already shared in my written communication with the community and the board, I'd like to add that staff have been, rather, staff have been informed of their placement school for the year, and we're in the process of physically relocating items from Ursa Major to our other base campuses. We're still awaiting a final written report from the original engineering firm involved with Ursa Major's seismic evaluation, and we are in the process of obtaining a second engineering firm opinion as well, so that we are well-prepared to evaluate our next steps. For those of you who want lifetime updates, you can check out our website at asdk12.org/umrelocation. And you can also go on our main page and click on Hot Topics, and it's right there. So thank you to the many people in this room, as well as our Jay Bear principals who have truly worked around the clock in recent days to make sure there is a safe and efficient plan in place for our Ursa Major students and families. Two, I want to share a quick update on our summit. So I'm pleased to share that all of our assistant principals and principals attended our Leadership and Learning Summit this year at Bartlett High School. Principals have the opportunity to convene in small group discussions with our leadership team to receive timely and important information on everything from teaching and learning to safety and security. It was a much smaller event than it's been in past years because I have a very strong belief in engaging in two-way dialogue with principals. That's very important and central to their leadership development, because like I mentioned, I envision a well-supported, highly effective principal in every school. I also want to share that we have sixty-one ASD staff, ASD staff members who are either APs and principals who are new to their school or new to their role. I want to repeat that, sixty-one people, either new to their role or new to the assistant principalship or principalship. And that is really putting fire underneath me to ensure that we emphasize their own professional development, because I can tell you, it's not easy to be a new guy, and it requires a lot of work to be prepared. And on that note, I want to share that I recently made a trip to Juneau. I enjoyed it, it was my first time. I was there for the Alaska Superintendent Association flying. Similarly to how we have so many new assistant principals and principals in Anchorage, we have dozens of new superintendents and people who are new to the superintendent position, including myself. And I left feeling that we're all in this together, and ASA is doing great work to keep us all connected and advocating for the right things for student at the state level. I received a fantastic presentation on the reading bill from legislative staffers who were in the room as that bill was being drafted, and I really feel optimistic that that bill is going to put ASD as well as the state in the right direction. So we'll be sure to report on board level updates as it relates to our planning for full implementation in the next school year. And lastly, regarding Juneau, I had the opportunity to receive a warm welcome from our new acting commissioner of deed, and I look forward to our continued partnership and collaboration. Couple more updates, health and medical. This one's important. So we are going to continue to monitor the situation in Anchorage as it relates to all communicable diseases, which includes COVID-19. At this time, we plan to adhere to the same infectious disease prevention protocols that the board was most recently briefed on. Our mitigation response will continue to be driven by data and in partnership with public health officials. To learn more about the specifics of our plan, you can go to our website at asdk12/covid19. And the last thing that I want to brief the board on is back to school. So first off, needless to say, we're super excited to welcome our students and staff back to school in the coming weeks. With that said, though, I do want to bring two particular issues to the attention of the board. One is that staffing continues to be a major challenge and concern as we prepare to open our schools. There are some bright spots with regards to our active teaching vacancies. It was as high as eighty-eight on seven-twelve. That number has decreased to about forty-four as of late July, and I hope that number continues to go down. We are making progress. But that said, there are a number of vacancies in critical areas, such as food service and bus drivers, that we are looking at. As a leadership team, this is on the forefront of our minds, and we are exploring all of our options to ensure minimal impact on student services to the best of our ability. But to be clear, we're down seventy-one bus drivers as of today, thirty-seven full-time custodians, and numerous positions in student nutrition. So we need to explore a lot of different options. So one, we're looking into ways to retain our current employees and also recruit new staff into these positions, and we're preparing ourselves for the reality that we may need to streamline operations to minimize disruption. In other words, there's a real possibility we won't be fully staffed in these positions on the first day of school, so we need to think through that scenario proactively while we're also thinking about bringing staff in and making sure that our current employees choose to stay in ASD. But to give you one example, this is a very challenging employment landscape. Specifically with bus drivers, we're in direct competition with the tourism industry, among others. For that specific group, we're actively working with the appropriate stakeholders to discuss hiring incentives and compensation, so we can take some concrete, big steps to tackle this issue. And I anticipate that I'll have a positive update to share on that front as soon as tomorrow. Lastly, there's a lot more information to come on this front, but for the purpose of tonight, I wanted you to know that this is at the forefront of our minds, and we won't leave any stone unturned. And then lastly, I'm really excited to welcome our families back to school. I hope that many of you, if not all of you, received your mailer in the mail. It's amazing, you can learn a little bit more about me on the front, but more importantly, you can learn about lots of information related to registration, vaccinations, pre-enrollment, our enrollment policies, all sorts of stuff, really important. But in case you didn't get one, you can access the information at asdk12.org/backtoschool, and it's also on our main page, and you can also check out our ADN insert that has similar information. But we're excited to get our kiddos back in our schools. So that's all I have for tonight.
That was quite an update. Thank you for your first as well. Well, we are absolutely delighted that you are here, and we are, want to lend our full support as we move forward into a brand-new year. And in thirty-three days, you have been a busy person. And as we try to, you know, acclimate you to not just, I mean, you moved from Texas to here, you've gotten the certification situation under, you know, out of the way. I feel like, you know, the sky's the limit, so thank you for that. And we are, we look forward to working in partnership with you as we continue. Are there any questions on those items that the superintendent just brought up? So I see Member Lessons on the items that he just talked about, and then I thought I saw Mr. Donnelly. Yes?
I don't, I'm concerned that they, you just said we could only ask questions based on the items he brought up. We've always been able to ask questions to the superintendent during this period of other things.
You can, Mr. Member Donnelly, you can, you can, in fairness to the new superintendent, you may not have the depth of knowledge to answer anything beyond what he's presented tonight. That is all I'm saying. But you can ask what you want, and I'm sure he'll figure out how to get you the answer. Member Lessons?
Thank you. Thank you for a great update, Dr. Bryant. I just wanted to clarify, if the board is receiving a potential update on the bus situation tomorrow, when would that information, would that be available publicly tomorrow as well or at perhaps a slightly later time?
It will likely be made fully available to the public very soon, but this is hot off the press, so I need to get a little bit more information on that particular issue.
Okay, Member Donnelly, you had a question, and then Member Higgins.
Just to give a little background, Dr. Bryant, as you know, the bonds failed last April. I had in work sessions and in meetings, comment periods, suggested that we needed to get together as a board in April, May, and June and talk about where we're going from here, because we have a six-year plan that now doesn't fit because of the failure of the bonds. I was told we were going to be getting to that. So I was a little surprised tonight to hear testimony that the ASD was proceeding to seek approval of the design that was rejected by the voters before the Urban Design Commission. Are we doing that, and why are we proceeding with that at this time until the board's at a time to regroup and reconsider where we're at, given the failure of the bonds?
I'd like to defer to the request for information process on that particular question, because I'm not aware of anything that requires immediate board action related to that.
Okay. Member Donnelly, I think I heard the same thing. It doesn't make any sense to me either, and I was going to ask some more information on that as well. Because we, I don't know, but it was mentioned here tonight. So I'll submit a request for information on our both behalf. Member Higgins? Okay, you good? Anybody else? Thank you. So I'd like to now go back to our second item, eight, which is a public, thank you, Dr. Bishop, the B is right, Dr. Bryant. Okay, so public comment. In person, we have Mr. Corey Angst, and then we have one more telephonic person. Welcome to a new school year. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment, and on behalf of all the educators, welcome Dr. Bryant. I've only received positive feedback so far in the short time that he's been meeting and venturing out to our schools. I'm just really excited, and in the time I've also gotten to talk with him, very excited about our future and the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And I'm really glad you got unstuck from the tree, having been on the Port River myself. So, and then last, lastly, I just want to join Dr. Bryant in a shout-out to all the educators out at Ursa Major, all of them on base, Aurora, Orion, and Ursa Minor, who are working so hard to move classrooms this week. I've actually been really impressed to hear from educators the amount of time and energy they're putting into that, and I really appreciate ASD leadership in supporting them. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Roslyn Grady Weish. Hit star six to unmute, Ms. Weish.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes, welcome.
Hey, everyone. So I wanted to say sorry I'm not in the building. I really wanted to be there, but due to some health concerns, I'm not there. But my name is Roslyn, for those that don't know. I am the president and founder of the Alaska Coalition of BIPOC Educators, where we believe in equity, equality, and justice. I first and foremost want to say welcome to Dr. Bryant. I got to meet you already a while back, and I'm just super excited for what you're going to bring to the table. I also want to say thank you to everyone at ASD that participated in the back-to-school Even though some weren't there, some were there, and those that were there brought, you know, that spunk, they brought that ASD spunk, and I totally appreciated Carl Jacobs and Megan Gall and a couple other people, I just can't think of their names right now, but I really wanted to say thank you. I wanted to say thank you to Sonia Hunt, and, oh, Kelly Lessons was there, too, and just everybody that was there, everybody that, there's another, the Special Ed Department, Ms. Charlie Shalane, thank you, guys, all bringing the supplies that were provided as well. We did over eighteen-hundred backpacks, that's huge. Whether it was our neighborhood, there was a lot of faces there, a lot, and they were super excited to get their backpacks, get their hot dogs. Stream Academy, our charter school, was there, you know? And so hopefully next year, we'll be able to talk more, sit at the table, and bring on more of our charter schools and our programs so that they can just come and have a face. I heard from their school principal that they actually obtained a student, all from being at the backpack drive, so that's huge. That was one of my goals and visions, for having a backpack drive to not only provide backpacks to students, but also provide an ASD face. And we have more work to do, so I hope to be able to sit at more tables. I appreciate those tables I have already been at, and just looking forward to the work that we need to accomplish. I also want to give a shout-out to the Mountain View Leadership, Mountain View Elementary School Leadership Team. I'm super excited for what Dr. Hill is bringing. There's all types of changes going on at ASD, but I would have to shout out my school in particular. And I'm just super excited because we are the number-one school in Alaska, and I'm sure she's probably going to get flapped for that, but I would never think of our school any less. So I just hope that you guys come and visit us as well. And, Dr. Bryant, I can't wait to see you over at Mountain View Elementary School. So thank you, and I appreciate you all, and have a beautiful evening.
Thank you, Ms. Weish. And that concludes our test, our public comment period. And so now we are at the item J, school board and administration comments, if there are any closing comments. Let's start, let's start. Okay, we'll go, Member Lessons, and we're going to go counterclockwise, come around this way.
Well, great. So if anybody wants to have a really great feeling, I suggest that you read Memory N. M. seven, eight, nine, and ten on tonight's agenda. I don't normally say this, because they list all of these incredible community partners that have donated time and treasure in all sorts of incredible projects over the past year. So it is just a little moment to lighten, lighten your spirits, feel inspired, and feel gratitude. So seven, eight, nine, and ten on tonight's agenda. I also wanted to have a quick announcement that the Anchorage School District School Board is commencing its work with the Wellness Committee, and the board, the committee will be seeking five parent and/or guardian members of that advisory committee. There is a new website on asdk12.org/wellness where parents and guardians can apply. It's my understanding that applications will be due by five o'clock PM on Friday, August 12th, and we will have members appointed by the sixteenth. So again, that's asdk12.org/wellness, and we have a finance committee August 10th at noon.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Member Holloman?
Yes, I do want to thank everyone that came from the Inlet View community. Of course, most of them have gotten to go home by now. So we appreciate the support they showed in trying to pass the bond. And of course, a lot of the public does take the feeling that if they vote down a bond, they've said, "Don't do that." What they're really saying is, "Don't finance it this way, it doesn't change the need for it." And I'm glad that they're still showing up to say that the need is urgent, and, you know, it'll be something that we look at in the coming months. Do appreciate your forthrightness in being stuck. If anybody in Alaska says they haven't, that just means they haven't been on a river. With a warning, and I'm sure Corey can tell you, not everybody gets unstuck, but you don't have to worry about them anymore when they do, but keep getting unstuck, because that's the best way to go. Your message about supporting principals so they support their staff will be very exciting to staff. I suspect you will see that resonate in a big way, especially having the two-way conversations and feedback where people, people feel included in that. And lastly, I have to say, as someone that's, I've been involved with the board in a lot of different angles, as a classroom teacher, as the AEA president, as a board member. One of the remarkable...
Your mic went off.
I don't know who did that.
Gremlin.
We, it's easy for us to forget that, for a whole lot of the public, she is the face of the board. She is the person they contact. And a lot of times, they're upset. A lot of times, they're angry. A lot of times, they're nervous about testifying and whatnot. I've never heard anyone complain in all this time. Even people that feel a lot of hostility towards us feel treated fairly in terms of getting the information they need to do to do what they, or what they want to convey to the board. And that's not always easy to do. A lot of them are calling and coming in a mood not to get along with folks. But it makes our work a lot easier when they feel like at least they've been treated fairly. A huge thank you for doing that for so many years and so consistently over all that time. So, yep, the year's about to begin. As someone who used to spend about a month in a building before students came back, I can tell you the day when the doors opened and all the kids show up is such a magical change in the district, and we're just two weeks from it. So it's lots to look forward to. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Holloman. All right. Here we go. Member Higgins.
Well, we've got three hours and forty-five minutes.
Oh, no, you don't. No, no, no.
I guess I want to start off by just welcoming Dr. Bryant. I am very impressed with his analytical approach to the issues that we've got and the communications. Establishing a strong relationship between the staff and the administration, management principles and of that group is critical. The challenges he's got is just massive for superintendent coming in at a time where we have the financial crisis, but we've got to address the academics. So the combination of those two is unfair, but as they say, that's the way the cards are dealt. And we're going to have to deal with it, not just Dr. Bryant, but every person on this board. And hopefully, with the involvement of the public, the parents and the kids all have so much at stake that we have to do whatever it takes to do it. And that's going to be a challenge. But I am glad to welcome Dr. Bryant to the new role. I really am. Katie, I guess I've worked with you longer than anyone else here, and you've had to order my food when I don't. And you've had to remind me to do things that I sometimes didn't do, and sometimes I did. But you were always staying on top of it. And I have to tell you, when I first started, I remember how many people were in the admin area compared to what we went down to, and you got thrown more and more things at you. That was, those first nine years on the board, we cut administration every year, and that didn't help you at all. But it's the way we played it, and I appreciate the job you've done all that time. Very professional, great job. And you balanced out the things you had to do and the problems I had. So I appreciate that. I appreciate Dr. Jared's comment on COVID. We don't know what's coming on. We've got all the other issues out there. What's going to play out? We have, this is not just, it's over behind us. We don't know what's ahead of us. I remember a study that said we still have a hun, over a million different viruses that can be transitioned from animals to other animals to people. And then you've got all the mutations with that. And right now, this one is not done. So I appreciate the fact that we're looking at that. I hope that we have a lessons learned from how we did it last time, how we could do it better this time. So at least we focus on that a little bit. That's important. You know, balancing the finance and academics, what he mentioned, goals and guardrails. I hope we get a careful review of that, because there were a lot of issues there that, there were so many goals we can come out with. I remember when I first got on the school board, we had a document about that thick, but each one being a line of a different goal, and how foolish they were at some point. They had one that said we wanted to get the grade point average up for math. And the other one said we wanted to get the academic scores up. And the academic scores went down, the math scores went up, and they said, must be a success. I had a little dispute with that. But we changed our approach in there, and I think we need to look again. Not so much that we didn't have guards and goals that were good, but we have to say, are they working for what we want to accomplish? And are they accomplishing all the goals we want? So I view that as important. I just want to make a comment on staffing. You know, I'm been in human resources for surprisingly more than five years, times ten. And I remember the superintendent, I mean, the economist for the state came out here about six, eight months ago, I guess, and gave a review and said, there's twenty-seven thousand less adults working in Alaska today than there was ten years ago. And that three groups of employees are being targeted for recruitment to come up to Alaska and get them to move to lower forty-eight. Truck drivers, nurses, and teachers. We have enough challenges, as is what we're very vulnerable in that regards. Our cost of living is higher, salaries, we haven't had the kind of increases in funding necessary to be competitive the way we would want to be. And we can't afford to lose what we've got. Dr. Jared, I agree with you. The HR has saying the best way to recruit today, don't lose what you got, because the challenges of replacements are great. So I think we've got a master problem in that regards. And we are going to have a hell of a challenge trying to maintain buses, food service, everything else. You can't go to a fast-food restaurant. You can't go to a grocery store. You can't go to hardware place without help wanted sign. I remember one place at Lowe's, I saw a help wanted sign that was bigger than that, that two-story sign that says Lowe's. It was help wanted. And so I think we're in that market, and how we respond and what we have to do is important. But what we see is that people stay with a job, they leave a job, based upon how they feel about how they're managed as people, as employees. So if we don't focus on trying to make sure that we recognize and appreciate the employees we have, that we don't respect them when there are issues coming up, and we don't look at them carefully from a standpoint of what's fair, and make sure that they understand we have that, we're going to lose people we can't replace. And that's what we're seeing throughout the whole country. And we are going to see it in space here in Anchorage and Alaska. So the challenge is there. I appreciate it. And like I said, welcome, Dr. Bryant. And Katie, we're going to miss you. That's not directed negatively to the replacements, of course, but I appreciate everything, and I'm confident that we're going to make a good, smooth transition with this process. Thank you.
Wow, thank you. Member Donnelly.
Thank you, Madam President. Prior to our July break, parents had brought up concerns to the board regarding the pronoun issue and the current administrative guidelines, working with transgender and gender nonconforming students and employees. And of specific concern was the language on page eight, section fourteen B, quote, "Generally notification of a student's parent about his or her gender identity, expression, or transition is unnecessary." And I think parents are rightly concerned that this policy would prohibit them or prevent them from getting information that's very essential to their child's well-being and their knowledge about what's happening in their own family. So I want to bring that back before the board as a concern. I think it's been very legitimately raised by parents in the district. When we talked about this before the July break, the response from the superintendent at that time was that there was some sort of glitch in a program the district had bought that didn't, that didn't provide the proper notice to parents, and we were going to do some reprogramming to fix that. But it also appears in the guidelines, the current guidelines. And I'm very concerned about that. And I'm hoping that that can be reexamined by the administration, because I think parents have a right to know what's happening with their children in school.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. And to clarify, the trends, the guidelines, the transgender, gender nonconforming guidelines, they didn't come up last time. Q came up last time, but that has come up in subsequent emails. So, Dr. Bishop, Dr. Bryant will do his due diligence to get back to us on that. Member Jacobs. Dr. B, yeah, that's what I was, Dr. B.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of quick notes. I had asked a question regarding the guidelines, and they were phrased to me as something that was new. And I just, my understanding is that those have been drafted since 2015 or so, most recently revised in 2020. So I was hoping folks like Member Donnelly might be able to shed some light as one of the longer-term board members. But looking forward to more discussions on that. With that said, I wanted to thank those who came out to testify tonight. Always appreciate those willing to take time out of their evening to share thoughts and prerogative with the board. Dr. Bryant, really appreciate your report. It was thoughtful, thorough. Couldn't be more excited to have you on board. Katie, thank you so much for everything. As a relatively new board member coming on, and getting emails from you at eight at night while we got my access set up, and I got up to speed. I constantly admire your professionalism, your availability. Ms. Foster, looking forward to working with you. It sounds like you have big shoes to fill. It's because you do, but I'm sure you'll be up to the task. Looking forward to a full-throated discussion on how we can leverage one-time funds to promote healthy learning spaces for our students, families, and staff. I think we have these one-time funds. I'm looking forward to the Finance Committee meetings and subsequent board meetings to really carefully examine how we can promote safety in our buildings and leverage those one-time funds into something that might last past just one year. So that's a lens I'm going to bring to the conversation for sure. With that, I'll leave it there. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Member Wilson.
I appreciate our military partners coming to introduce themselves. They are a very important part of our community. And I just wanted to say thank you to Adele Daniels for your commitment and support toward military youth as well. And the airshow was mentioned, and it is such a great, family-friendly activity and event. My example of that is my mother-in-law used to pack up all the grandkids, and that was their day. She would take them to the airshow. And this past weekend, I was out of town, and my daughter called, who's now twenty-two, and she said, I'm going to pack grandma up and take her to the airshow. So she packed grandma up with her walker, took her to the airshow, and twenty years later, they're still going to the airshow, which is, which is pretty impressive, though. That was awesome. Thank you to our staff that chose to work summer school this year. I had the pleasure of attending the summer school graduation and graduation ceremony. And I just really appreciate the continued support of the staff and the continued work of our students that needed that little bit of extra time to complete their graduation and push through. So congratulations to our summer school graduates as well. And welcome to Dr. Bryant, of course, and thank you to our wonderful Katie for your service and commitment to the board. And I look forward to a great school year. Also, the Communications Committee meeting is tomorrow at noon. Just a reminder there.
Very good. Thank you. And my comments will be very brief, but I do want to welcome Amanda, and thank everybody that helped us to not just find her, but get her interviewed, get her hired, get her onboarded. These last couple of weeks have been furious. And also, and of course, I think more than any of the board members, I've probably been the one to have more conversations with Dr. B. And I have absolutely enjoyed those conversations. And I look forward to a full partnership between the board and our new superintendent, so we can make fabulous things happen for our kids. And then finally, and then Katie, I don't even know what to say. I've been in denial now for weeks. But at the same time, you know, you're very special, and special things are very valuable, and everybody wants them. So Jim, yeah, yeah, yeah. I couldn't believe you did that to me. I thought I was your friend. Anyway, you guys are going to have a great team, and we look forward to building the same kind of team with Amanda. And for the staff that's worked all summer, I mean, Dr. Stock, you're still hanging in there with us. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. All of you, I hope you had some time to have some respite and some fun and some joy. But we are very excited to have you back and willing to walk these, this journey with us on behalf of our kids. So we thank you. Thank you, thank you. And with that, Dr. B, do you have any closing comments?
I do not. You heard enough of my voice tonight.
Thank you. What about anybody over here? Anybody? I know you guys want to get out of here. All right. I hear you. Move to adjournance. Accept it. Moving.
Second.
I moved to adjourn.
Oh, you moved to adjourn.
He's second.